All right, today's date is July 13th. It is 2 o'clock PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the LAFCO Alameda County Local Agency Formation Commission. Please rise to salute the flag. Okay, thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Furia.
Here.
Commissioner Haber.
Present.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Miley. Commissioner Splendorio.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Marchand.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Tam. Alternate Commissioner Von Heater Leopold.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Warner, absent. Record reflect, roll call has been taken and we have a quorum.
All right, excellent, thank you. All right, agenda item is three is public comment. Anyone that would like to address this commission on matters not listed on the agenda and has turned in their speaker card. We'd be most happy to hear what you have to say. We're asking that you do keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome, sir.
All right. I think that many of you might be familiar with one of the overriding and overarching bulwarks, pillars, foundational elements of our Local Agency Formation Commission, protection against suburban sprawl, and that's called Measure D. Measure D is a holy writ. It's a Bible of, for the last 20 years, and we regularly have hear sermons from the believers, and I'm one of them, of course. And the, one of the elements there in Measure D, which is often forgotten, often overlooked, rarely remembered by the LAFCO and by anybody else, is the Altamont Gateway Policy. The Altamont Gateway Policy explicitly calls out for no additional road capacity over the Altamont Pass. The Altamont Pass already has a five or 10 lane freeway, 12 lane? I don't know how many lanes, it's a lot of lanes, and already has a couple of roads over it. And one of the little things that the county is doing, literally the county, because their workers are going to be out there hiring the contractors to go out and expand the capacity. How could that be? Well, it's what you do, what happens, the way you can expand capacity is you find bottlenecks and you widen the bottlenecks. That's the key, the secret to capacity expansion. And what's going on on this, on this road, I forgot the name, not Grant Line, it's the one on the north side, is they are taking two intersections that now have stop signs and now have one lane roads going into them, or two lane roads, one in each direction, and they're making them into four lanes. And that's, and because the lanes go around in circles, it's a roundabout, got it round, that they consider that a safety measure. See, what's the difference between safety and capacity? Hard, it's hard for county planners to distinguish, and that's why this is happening. Also because the San Joaquin County is paying for it. So if you're getting paid, why say no? And why not just forget about the Altamont Gateway Policy? Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Braille.
I do not have any other speaker cards. Do we have anybody that's calling in that would like to speak?
No, we do not, Chair.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period and move on to Agenda Item Four, that is consent items that are normally approved in a single vote based on their format. Do I have any questions on the consent items?
I'll move approval.
Oh, could be, I just want to make sure anybody that's calling in, okay. I don't see anybody with raised hand.
Okay, I'll move approval.
All right.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded. Can we have, since we have some remote callers, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Furia.
Yes.
Commissioner Haber.
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Miley.
Yes.
Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, we have a quorum, excuse me, let the record reflect the motion passed.
A quorum.
And we have.
Okay, thank you. Could we, could I ask that you stop the timer, please? It seems to be in a continuous circle. Okay, we're on to Agenda Item Five, which is a draft report on the Alameda County LAFCO South Livermore Valley Special Study. Could I turn it over to Executive Director, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. This item is for the commission to receive and review the draft report on the South Livermore Valley Special Study, consistent with the adopted work plan and ahead of staff initiating a 30-day public review and comment period. Similarly, it is an opportunity for staff to present findings to key stakeholders and agencies in the region. Feedback will be incorporated as appropriate into a final report presented for final action as early as September for the commission to formally accept and file or return with specific actions. Today, we have Scott Gregory of Lampier Gregory, the consultant, who worked and conducted this study, and he is here today to provide the commission a presentation on that.
Welcome, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you very much, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you in person today. I've been on several Zoom meetings in the past, and it's really nice to kind of be able to be present. We're here to present some of our preliminary findings or kind of an overview of the document that we prepared that was a specific South Livermore area, South Livermore Valley study. And you had asked us to look at a number of issues. One was to look at current conditions within South Livermore Valley. Number two, to look at some of the trends, conditions, and factors that are influencing the valley. And then third, what role might LAFCO have in discussions and decisions about the futures, future events within Livermore Valley? So I'm going to try to go through quickly, don't want to take up too much of your valuable time. I'm going to have a bunch of slides, so if you see me taking too long, just give me a little speed it up button and I'll go fast.
You scared me at a bunch of slides.
So our first question was how many acres of land have been annexed to the city, or annexed to the cities of Livermore and Pleasanton? How many changes in spheres of influence or municipal service boundaries have occurred? How much urban development has occurred within the valley? What's the status of current vineyard acres and wineries? And how many acres of open space in Agland are currently preserved through conservation easements? So we've talked to, Rachel and I have talked to members of the City Livermore Planning Department, Alameda County Planning Department. We collaborated with Zone Seven, we've discussed information with the water, with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We reviewed a number of public documents. And we relied heavily to, on all this, on information that's presented in Realizing the Heritage, the important study that was commissioned by the Tri-Valley Conservancy to specifically look at issues related to wineries and wine production in the Livermore Valley. All right, so let's take a quick look at kind of some geographical boundaries and considerations in the Livermore Valley planning area. The green area is Livermore City proper, within this Livermore, within the city boundaries. The pink area to the right is the City of Livermore Sphere of Influence. Ruby to the left is, in blue and also in pink, unfortunately, is the boundaries for the City of Livermore. The dark outline that you see on this map is the boundaries of Alameda County South Livermore Valley Area Plan, which set land use planning strategies for this area back in 1994. At about the same time, the City of Livermore adopted a general plan update that established an urban growth boundary. That urban growth boundary has become part of Measure D. And over time, the City of Pleasanton has annexed and construction has occurred at Ruby Hill and the vineyard subarea to the, to the west of that diagram. The City of Livermore has annexed and approved development for the Alden Lane Subarea and for the Vineyard Estates area adjacent to Ruby Hill. Also pursuant to the South Livermore, to the City of Livermore South Livermore Specific Plan, which identified seven distinct subareas within the valley, additional development has occurred within these subareas. Each of those development areas required a mitigation strategy that involved conservation easements, planting of viticulture, planting of vineyards to occur both within the subareas and exterior through mitigation requirements. Just to give you kind of a sense, the South Livermore Specific Plan had a concept plan for each of these subareas. I picked one and just to kind of demonstrate that it had a pretty precise expectation for what would occur within each of those subareas that included residential development and then as well as conservation of agricultural, planting of viticulture and other intensive crops. And the image to the right is a current aerial that demonstrates that that specific plan held pretty tight and the development that was anticipated occurred the way it was intended per the plan and that the areas that remain as agriculture intensive viticulture use remain that way today. In total, the South Livermore Specific Plan anticipated the construction of about 1,200 residential units and about 1,200 units have been constructed. It anticipated about 16 sites for commercial development that would have included new wineries, Ben breakfast establishments, and other tourist-serving uses. Only about three of those sites have been built to date. It also anticipated preservation within the boundaries of about 810 acres of agricultural land. About 747 is what we've measured as occurring today. That's kind of a summary of that specific plan. The other change that has occurred is that not too long ago, Concanon Winery came to the City of Livermore, ready to be annexed. That annexation also came before the LAFCO board and those, that annexation was approved. This image just shows a quick overview of residential development that has occurred in the South Livermore Valley, including and principally limited to those areas that we just talked about, Ruby Hill and Alden Lane, the South Livermore Valley Specific Plan Subareas, and then pursuant to the County's South Livermore Area Plan, which allowed for clustered residential development, highlighted a number of areas where those, that kind of clustering development has occurred that allowed essentially a subdivision into smaller lots than the 100 acre minimum as long as they provided a compensatory mitigation through agricultural growth and vineyard plantings. This image is kind of the reverse. It shows the areas that are currently under vineyard and irrigated intensive agriculture of orchards and row crops. So all the green is vineyard lands, all of the yellow is crop lands. This map corresponds really closely with the same type of map that was prepared by Tri-Valley Conservancy and presented in Realizing the Heritage, and I think we've got maybe a little bit of kind of updates, but it's very similar. According to our measurements and the way we've gone through this, right now, there's about 2,950 acres of vineyards within the South Livermore Valley. There's about 350 acres of orchards, the total planted acreage of about 3,300 acres. This compares to the South Livermore Valley Area Plan's goal of a critical mass of up to 5,000 acres of planted agriculture. So we're still somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,700 acres short of that overall goal. Here's a map that shows the current Tri-Valley Conservancy's Conservation Easements and other public lands. Conservancy, my number's here, the Conservancy has about 4,500 acres of land within the Livermore Valley under easement. That includes 3,900 acres of agricultural land, 640 acres of habitat, more than 500 acres of parks and open space. And finally, another map that provides you an indication of current, will come, commercial operations that occur within the valley. So all the yellow dots are wineries. You see a high concentration of those wineries along South Livermore Road, along Tesla, and down through Greenville Road, as well as over towards Ruby Hill area. It also shows equestrian facilities that are located within the Livermore Valley and the three golf courses. This kind of sets the stage. So what are the current trends and new information that is happening? What's the current status of the grape and winery business? What might new wastewater disposal, how might new wastewater disposal requirements affect winery operations or the potential for expansion? How might the city's plans for extended sewer service affect new development? How might the city's plans for extended service affect the city boundaries, spheres of influence, and other municipal service agreements? And how might the changes to Measure D also affect vineyard land use in the valley? So to get a broader picture, I prepared a chart on the left side of this slide that shows kind of the, it shows the trend in the retail value of California wines. So this is not Livermore specific, this shows a very much California basis. And you can see that the trend definitely does show a continuing increase. It shows a dramatic dip that happened during the pandemic. And it also, if you showed, look at it kind of carefully, shows that the increased trend starts to taper off sometime around 2016. And there's a lot of, a lot of experts that opine in terms of why that is, and it has much to do, I think, with demographics and the preferences of wine buyers versus other beverage choices. But nevertheless, it does show a continuing increase in the retail value of California wine. Some of the other numbers that are kind of interesting to understand is that California's share of the overall United States wine production is about 85%. So the vast majority of all wine produced in the US comes from California. Livermore's share of California wines, it's only about 1% of that total. So though it's a, it's an exciting and vibrant wine region, its share is relatively small compared to some of the bigger wine country areas in, for instance, Napa or Sonoma. About 415,000 tourists come to Livermore Valley, take part in wine country activities, spending about $276 million in winery tourism-related spending. And about $2.4 billion is spent in the total economy related to wine industry within Alameda County, most of which happens in Livermore Valley. So that includes wine sales, grape sales, labor, tourism-related dollars, charitable contributions, it's a big number. All of those numbers represent somewhere between 1% and 5% of the total California, similar numbers. So it is probably in terms of tourists, in terms of wine-related spending, and in terms of total economics. While Livermore produces about 1% of the wine, its numbers in terms of its share of those dollars is of a higher percentage, 4% to 5% in that area. So looking at kind of more specifics of Livermore, Livermore's winery business, in 2019, per Realizing the Heritage, they found 48 wineries that were active within the Livermore Valley. Since then, through my research and kind of talking with people, we found that as many as, we think 11 wineries have closed or stopped operations primarily due to the pandemic since that issue arrived. However, eight new wineries have now added, been added to the Wine Growers Association, leaving us with about 45 current wineries in the valley. So there has been a bounce, but I think that the difference between the size of the new wineries and the size of some of the wineries that closed is significant. To look kind of at the overall winery business in the valley, there's two wineries, Wentie and Concanon, that generate about 82% of all Livermore Valley wine. The seven largest wineries, including Wentie and Concanon, generate 90% of all Livermore Valley wine. And the remaining 41 smaller wineries generate only about 10% of the Livermore Valley wine. The larger wineries generally have regional or national distribution chains. You can buy them in the grocery stores, liquor stores, whereas many and most of the smaller wineries rely on direct-to-consumer sales, either at a tasting room or sometimes, you know, through online purchases. But those, it's a much more direct relationship between the wineries and their customers. So a couple of recent things have come to event. One that's, so the one that has not occurred just recently, over time, and in fact historically, the Livermore, the main grain, main groundwater basin in this area has had certain, has great, frankly, water quality, but it does have what are identified as hotspots where nutrient loads have been identified as being high. Most of these locations where these, where these high nutrient hotspots are located are attributed to historic agricultural use in the past, but they are also coincidental with areas that have, that rely on onsite wastewater treatments for both domestic wastewater disposal and for the disposal of winery processed water. So wineries tend to generate a lot of additional, they tend to use a lot of water in their processing to make wine, and that processing water, that processed water is generally disposed of through onsite wastewater systems, and it contains a lot of nutrients. In response to not just Livermore, but statewide, this being a concern, and because of sort of a backlog and permit processes for wineries throughout the state, the Water Board has issued a waste, issued a waste discharge requirement process in 2022. It applies to all wineries and it provides a fairly rigorous process of application requirements, fees, monitoring and reporting, all related to how much discharge you have from your winery process and measures not just nitrate, but a number of other constituents. The overall order is divided into four different, well, five different categories. The first is exempt, so any winery that's less than 10,000 gallons per year of discharge is exempt. And then there's tiers two, three, and tier four that have escalating requirements, escalating obligations, escalating monitoring and reporting procedures that go with it. I compared 2019 estimates in terms of production values of wine to arrive at perhaps a best guess of how Livermore Valley's wines stack up into these different tiers. It's likely that both Concanon and Wentie fall into the tier two, tier four category, though they are already under their own individual waste discharge permit requirements. Perhaps three Livermore Valley wineries will end up in tier three, 17 to 18 in tier two. And somewhere between 14 and 17 wineries will either be tier one or exempt. And so as I mentioned, the tier one and the exempt have much less stringent requirements than the tier four, but there's still new requirements and their obligations for both monitoring and reporting over time. Just to give you a sense of a tier four strategy, so as I mentioned, Concanon Wineries had, has their own discharge permit, an individual permit, and they were not too long ago exceeding that discharge permit. In order to address that, this is a picture from the company that developed their process treatment facilities. You get a sense of the scale of what they needed to do in order to bring their processed water into compliance, included lift stations, equalization basins, primary, secondary treatment, biological nutrient removal, membranes, irrigation supplies, controls, and sludge de-watering. So it's a, it was an extensive process. I'm sure it was very expensive, I don't know the dollar amount. And I'm not suggesting that this kind of scale would apply to every winery, but it does give you a sense of the scale that would, that did apply to Concanon and perhaps to the tier four type requirements. In 2022, the City of Livermore proposed a new sewer line extension. And the sewer line extension was both an alternative means of, let's go back to this picture here for a second. The area that's drawn in this image as a red boundary, so it's kind of covers the Greenville hotspot and most of the Buena Vista hotspot, is an area that the county has a special permit requirement for onsite wastewater treatment and already requires that nit, pre-treatment be conducted for nitrates so that the wastewater treatments in those areas are already, you know, covered by more extensive and more rigorous requirements than ways, onsite wastewater treatments elsewhere throughout the main basin. So recognizing that we had, there was an existing situation with nitrate hotspots, that there was extensive permit requirements that were perhaps difficult or cumbersome to meet, that there were a number of both residences that were onsite wastewater treatment as well as that long corridor of South Livermore Valley, Tesla Road, Greenville Road, all including existing wineries that are relying on onsite wastewater treatment systems. Livermore proposed a new sewer line extension that would serve this area. And I've kind of highlighted both the alignment of that proposed sewer line down Buena Vista, South Livermore, Tesla, and Greenville. And I've highlighted properties that are either immediately adjacent to that sewer line or that have relatively ease of access through private roads and connections. And I've dropped the wineries that are within those properties on the map. And you can see that frankly, the majority of wineries in the South Livermore Valley would be served by a sewer, could be served by a sewer line. The Martinelli Events Center could be served by a sewer line, the Buena Vista Residential Neighborhood could be served by that sewer line. So that sewer line project was proposed and included an amendment to Livermore's general plan to allow them to, to allow for water, wastewater service outside of its city boundaries. But that's subject to LAFCO's consideration. In 2022, the City of Livermore's consultants, Hydroscience, prepared an estimate of the cost associated with construction of that Livermore, of that Livermore Valley sewer extension at about $12 million. Rachel and I have talked to a lot of people to find out, well, what's, what's the current number? How, what is, how much is this really going to cost? And we don't know, I'm not sure who does, but we don't know yet. But we have heard that the estimates are, that the estimates presented in 2022 are likely low and that that cost may be closer to $20 million and subject to the details of specifically who gets served, how big do the pipes need to be, and where does it go? So the third consideration that you asked us to look at was what are Alameda LAFCO's considerations with regards to existing conditions and some of these ongoing trends? And how might you influence or think about what these, what these issues mean in a LAFCO advisor? So specifically, what factors are relevant to Alameda LAFCO's mission regarding agriculture and agricultural businesses? What means and methods are available to LAFCO to influence that outcomes? What is Alameda LAFCO's role relative to the sewer expansion project? And then what are some of the important policy and procedural implications of the LAFCO relative to the Livermore's proposed sewer expansion? So an important consideration, Alameda, in LAFCO's board pursuant to all of your policies is the preservation and expansion of agriculture, protection, preservation, expansion of agriculture. The South Livermore, South Livermore Valley Area Plan, as I mentioned, has a goal of 5,000 acres of cultivated agriculture. Realizing the Heritage did an in-depth study of the valley and said there's adequate land within the valley to accommodate 5,000 acres of cultivated agriculture. The catch is ensuring that there's a demand for that agriculture. So Livermore Valley vineyards can be profitable and competitive with an increase in demand for grapes. So that's kind of the key, is there needs to be an increased demand of grapes. So where does that demand come from? Well, expanded existing winery operations, economic incentives may be needed to attract new wineries, and realizing an entirely new market for Livermore grapes. So expansion, new markets, marketing, selling Livermore grapes to other locations is a long-term strategy. The potential for attracting a new, new wineries, especially larger new wineries that might be able to rely specifically on Livermore grapes may be a faster approach to actually achieving that goal of expanding the cultivated agriculture within Livermore Valley to as many as 5,000 acres. Today, let me go back, today, the existing wineries in Livermore Valley do not utilize all of the grapes that are produced. Do not utilize all of the grapes that are produced in the valley, so the valley right now still sells much of its grapes to outside spot market purchases. Some of the concerns that Alameda Lafco have as it relates to municipal services, extension of boundaries, et cetera, is risk of urbanization. So Livermore's measure. W, I think, the, the, the proposed extension of the sewer line.
P.
P, thank you. It included specific language that said that this ballot measure does not change any land use designations. It doesn't provide for urbanization beyond the urban growth boundary. It doesn't have any land use effects that is not already in place under the county's South Livermore Valley area plan. It's just a sewer line to serve and provide services to those types of uses that either exist or could exist under existing regulations. So there is policy regulations and those policies are part of a ballot measure that couldn't be changed without a vote of the people. Significant policy implications. There's also practical implications. If you look at this diagram. Those areas in yellow are the areas that are part of, the, part of South Livermore Valley that have essentially urbanized. Either as part of the South Livermore Valley's specific plan with its commensurate agricultural mitigations. Or as part of the older Alden Lane, Ruby Hill Vineyard, Vineyard Corridor. Developments, which also included substantial mitigation obligations in the form of planting agriculture and conserving easements. So if you follow the red line, which is the urban growth boundary. Pretty much, most of that urban boundary is surrounded on one side by agriculture. And by, by conservation easements, which preclude the potential for urbanization in those areas. Any urbanization that could be really considered would have to be a leapfrog strategy, which is clearly against. Measure D, against Livermore's general plan, not consistent with Alameda County's area plan. There's both, there's both on the ground reasons and there's policy limitations to the risk of urbanization that's related to that sewer line. What specific role might Alameda Lafco have as it pertains to the sewer line extension? So this gets into the question of a change in municipal boundaries and municipal services. And Livermore, presuming as the, as the project applicant, will need to come before this board and ask you to approve. Either annexations and or out of area contracts in order to provide services outside of their city boundaries. I don't know yet what Livermore's expectations or plans are, or even the county's plans for annexation strategies. But I did look at your policies and procedures about how you consider these strategies. And saw an emphasis on lands that are adjacent to city boundaries, lands that are adjacent to or within spheres of influence. And then what to do about lands that are not adjacent to either city boundaries or spheres of influence. So I've color coded my diagram here to show you in green, those lands that are actually adjacent to the city Livermore boundaries. And those under your policies are most likely, not necessarily, potential annexation areas. Lands that are within Livermore sphere of influence, sphere of influence, but not necessarily within their boundaries are color coded in red. Lands that are adjacent to Livermore sphere, but not adjacent to Livermore city boundaries and they're out in the county are blue. And then those lands that are not adjacent to the Livermore's boundaries or Livermore's sphere of influence and that are clearly squarely within. Unincorporated Alameda County are highlighted in yellow. So at some point there, Livermore, to move forward with this proposal. Will need to both figure out how much it costs and find funding. And there are many people that we've talked to that are in the process of looking to find funding. This sewer line is a publicly funded sewer extension and that new. Users of that line will pay standard city Livermore fees and connection requirements. But that the line itself would be a publicly funded project. So they're actively out looking for the funds necessary to build that, that sewer line. But not only do they need to find ways to pay, but then they will need to make an application to this, to this commission. For how they propose to provide that service, both or either or through annexations or out of area contracts. And in the last portion of our report, we've gone through some of your specific policies. As they, specific and general policies as they pertain to annexations and out of area contracts. And tried to provide you with some information, some backup material to help understand the implications, the specific policy implications associated with. Either of those choices. So that was the bunch of slides that I had. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I appreciate.
What we intend to do is distribute our report for about thirty days for public comments and presumably we'll.
Incorporate them.
Incorporate those, those, those comments and provide us.
Yes, okay, thank you. Let me see if any of our commissioners have questions. Anyone in the room? Certainly Commissioner Marchand.
Thank you. So on, let's see. Page thirty-four of the report, one twenty-four of the packet. You split a lot of different ways. You talked about the, the value of the, the economic impact, the number of tourists, the value of the grapes sold. Do you have any idea of what the, the value of the wine is sold? You had the value of the grapes, but then the value of the wine is obviously somewhat different. I appreciated the two point four billion in economic impact. That was a great number.
Yeah, it's a big one. So the, the county craft reports provide a, a retail value for wine grape product. And that, those numbers are presented in the report.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at it again. Page thirty-six, you're talking about the winery process water, you're talking about biochemical oxygen demand. Some of the other reports that I've seen show the, the nitrate levels of winery wastewater to be fairly low compared to. You know, some of the others, you've had the great map showing the, the nitrate plumes and most of those like with the Greenville and the Buena Vista. Those are from livestock impacts and, and not, not what. What is the, 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 the nitrate levels typically in, in winery wastewater?
Trying to think if I even have that in my report.
I, I didn't see it in there. I saw the B O D, which I thought was, was remarkable because it's, it's very high B O D.
Right, and it has to, you know, I mean, it has to do with that processing of the grapes.
What's the sugars?
And, and it's all during, and it's all happens during that crush season.
Right.
So I don't know, I, it's a good question and I can try to either find it in my report.
I, I looked a couple of times and I couldn't find it, but if you could just get back to, to about that. As I said, I, I used to do a lot of B O Ds, casey and blue and those sorts of things. So, but again, it's, most of those are going to be in the sugars of the, the juice and not. The, the nitrate loading primarily from fertilizers, but that wouldn't be in the wastewater.
Yeah, and whether that's in, in the skins and stems and other portions of the grapes that are part of the process, I, I'd have to look into.
Okay, that's what I got and we're still working on the annexation versus out of service agreement. Good comments you had about the annexation of Concanon, because it was very important. Because Concanon is where eighty-five percent of all California's Cabernet grapes came from. So it's a good piece of history there, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
If they put the sewer line down Buena Vista. My understanding from the county is that those homes that are within a certain distance from the sewer line would be required to connect. Is that, do you know if that's correct?
So. I'm gonna say, A, I don't know for sure, but B, I don't believe that it is the case. I believe that they are still trying to figure out who connects. The report itself that came out, both in the environmental impact report and the proposal for the, for the line said that they would make the line available. Those who wanted to connect could. One of the things that we've talked about is. Excuse me, whether annexation would occur, right, there's a whole process for that where people vote and they decide whether they want to or not. If it was to be an out of area contract arrangement that would, that would allow. People to choose or not to be part of, that perhaps a master agreement, that would be like a, a master out of area contract that would allow. Lafco and the cities to say, this person, this person, this person is in, and if you haven't decided yet. You can decide another day and just become part of that master contract. So there may be some ways to, to address in today's indecision that might become more clear, you know, over time. But I have not, I have not heard or read anything that was forcing people.
Okay, thank you.
To become, to, to hook up.
The other question in general, we've talked a lot about sewers, is there any need for, for water out here? At all?
Sure, well, water is always an ongoing concern for all agricultural activities. And, and the, the major purveyor of water out here is, is through zone seven. Zone seven has an allocation of agricultural water reserves. And whether they get their allocation or not depends on whether it rains and, and how much water is used by other delta users. Assuming that they receive their full allocation, they have plenty of water if they, to, to, to support the agriculture. If they don't, then everybody conserves.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, I, I see, I see one, but I'm going to check here in the room first. Any other questions?
I'll have some, but you can let Dave go if he wants to.
I did ask that we do ours in person first and then I'll go to him next, please.
So thanks Scott, I very much appreciate it. So I, I would like to see, and this is not a question, just something I'd like to see because this is supposed to be a retrospective. This is what was anticipated and this is what really happened. You've done a good job with it. I'm interested in the commercial sites that were designated primarily within the city of Livermore, seeing a chart. Just, I know you said three of them have been developed and I know which ones they are, three wineries. Some have been planted over. I would love, you know, some have got, like there's a hotel or supposedly, I would love to see it just a chart. And shows what is the current state of those and what were they originally zoned for? So I don't think Livermore is, I mean, they've messed around a little bit with some zoning, but I would love to have that. Because part of the idea of the South Livermore Plan was to create your economic engine for, you know, all. Sort of cohesive, that there would be some retail, some hotel, you know, hospitality, you know, and so that they all, and the wineries could all work together. To have tourism, you know, so it would be, and it doesn't have to be a chart, but it would be nice to see. This is what's been, has been done with those sites and here's what the rest. Ha, you know, is existing or they planted over. So, because I, you know, I might, you know, looking at over here, Marchand is, I hope to see Livermore eventually looks at this and says. Yeah, maybe we need to take a look at this and see if we should do things a little bit differently to give incentives to. Some of these other establishments that come here because like I said, three out of whatever it is, twenty or fifteen isn't, doesn't seem well, seemed good for me. So that's just one, that's one thing I would like to see.
We've had lawsuits on one of those.
Huh?
We've had lawsuits on some of those.
Yeah, well, that's true. Even those within exact, whatever. The other idea would, have you talked directly to Tri Valley Conservancy? Okay, so to David or to, or maybe Lori, the, the, okay. Because I mean, some of these statistics are, I think are also available. I mean, when you were talking about. This, I, I mean, I was reading through myself. You know, I can, maybe I can sit in with, there is some more data within T V C that might fill in some gaps here. You, you were, you were mentioning that maybe you don't know exactly, but I think that information is there. Or bluntly, even to talk to our past chair, David Kent, who was the CEO of the Wine Group, which owned Concanon. Can be helpful in just filling in some of the things that went on over the last fifteen, twenty years, or talk to Carl Wenti or Phil Wenti. Might help fill in some of the gaps of information I think would be helpful. You know, and so those are just observations I've just from my initial read that I would love to see incorporate. Because again, is, is I would like to see the South Livermore Plan be, you know, actually realized. And it's stagnated to a certain extent, and I think that was part of what I was hoping to see is this is what may be the reason why things didn't fully. Develop as we had hoped and so that is a guide for others to see, oh, you know, okay, we tripped, we, we tripped here, but I think we can. Address it some other way. I think the sewer is, I mean, and I also recognize that change in circumstances should force government to. Re-look at, and that's the whole idea of the sewer, I mean, you know, all the nitrates there really triggered all this. And, and one final point, take a look at, what are we calling? Urban Vasco Urbano, the, the little, our, our Livermore, some of you are familiar with like perhaps Tin City and Paso. Or the funk zone in Santa Barbara, these are in, in industrial area. Well, we have our own in Livermore and, and maybe just kind of look, look at that and why a lot of wineries. And breweries are locating there and I think has a lot to do with the cost of infrastructure, that the water's available, the sewer's available. Some of the things we see is challenges and, and just maybe if that is the case and it may validate why it was a good decision for the people of Livermore to vote to. Extend the sewer, I think that is one of the reasons, it just was impossible, basically. I'm sorry, I did say final. This is a policy thing that I think we're going to have to look at. I think you raised some good points and I'll give you. You know, generally our policy is you have to be adjacent to a public road or, or urban growth, you know, the boundaries, et cetera. But I know that there, you know, potentially could be more. Need for a sewer and not necessarily be adjacent to a road or to, and I'll give you an example, so. Byer Ranch, which is sort of the middle of that shot you have up there. I mean, the idea, there was an original proposal to split that into twenties, twenty acres. Well, they don't, I mean, that'd be silly if every one of them had to be a strip connected to Tesla. That would be silly, right? So there should be a, I mean, I'm thinking we should have a policy to facilitate as long as they have easements to access for the pipes. But that'd be something I would think that, that we would want to further because that's against and further into the plan. And I think looking at that is something that I think is important for us to look at because, you know, how you split these up. Is not going to be necessarily, should be based upon what our policies are, but we should adopt to encourage.
Crane Ridge is a similar example.
Exactly.
That are outside on the edge.
Correct.
Part of Crane Ridge and not really that hard to connect.
Correct, exactly, that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Okay, all right, just as a recommendation, staff is looking for an initial discussion and feedback, so terrific. All right, Commissioner Haber.
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. The economic. Potential, I think you listed two point four billion. Scott, does that include other potential? Additional agritourism, hotel, other types of commercial activity that may occur? Or just an expansion or increase in what's currently there, mostly wine?
Number was an actual number, so that's what's occurring today.
Did you do any projections of what this may bring to us in the future, what our total capacity potential might be?
No, I did not.
Okay, to further comment on your point made earlier about Buena Vista, I think. We're loo- looking at perhaps providing some incentives for residents to connect to the sewer. I don't know that we have an outright requirement or desire to make a requirement. But rather, we do hope that they do and we will likely provide incentives for them to do so. If you live on Buena Vista and you now have a sewer within close proximity. It, there's a good chance that that'll be a good bet for you to make in the future. Septic tanks are becoming more and more complicated and costly, they wear out eventually. Whereas the sewer line's a good long-term solution, so anyway, we're, we're working through that in a, in a different capacity. But you, you pointed that out quite nicely, that's going to be a big opportunity. Thank you, good report.
Thank you, if I could just add to that, we did talk to Livermore staff. And said typically, an annexation requires everything becomes city standards. Street widths, sidewalks, curb gutter, all those kinds of improvements, street lights, et cetera. And that they recognized that this was essentially the gateway or the corridor to the wine country. That it had its own different kind of ambiance that they would be unlikely to necessarily require unless they were. Forced to under some type of a code requirement to require that, that, that all of those kind of urban improvements would be required. To just to connect to a sewer line.
Okay, I just had a couple, thank you. When we talk about pre-annexation or annexation agreements of out of area contracts. Are we taking into consideration, I believe, the urban growth boundary for the city of Livermore was voted by residents? So it would need to return if you're going, are you, do you, some of the areas that you have? Uh, residents, so it would need to return if you're going, are you, do you, um, some of the areas that you have highlighted? Would that change the urban growth boundary and necessitate the need for going to the voters?
So I believe that that, that that issue was addressed by Livermore already as part of the sewer. Post-sewer line N F C I R, and that determination was made that by not. Proposing a change in land use to urban, that there was no need to change the urban growth boundary. It did need to change policies that pertain to that boundary that's precluded. S- uh, municipal sewer service, but that there would be no change in land use associated with it.
Okay, uh, we do have representative from the, that's your understanding as well?
The determination is where this, it is, because it's outside the urban growth boundary, but there's no urban growth proposed.
Right.
So they wouldn't require a vote. The vote was to extend the municipal sewer or the the service lines, the the sewer line. But that was already approved by the voters.
Terrific, good, because it's a hot button in many cities, right? And then uh, when I did my research, I found that uh, Measure P promised. Or in the ballot uh, language, they talked about eighty percent of the cost at that time. They were estimating about six point five million to be covered by the county. And then the balance of twenty percent would be covered by customers and that if they chose to connect. At least that was my understanding. Uh, do you feel comfortable that six point five million will be coming from the county for this project?
I would say nothing's done until it's done, but but this, when we have talked to county, they. They made a prior commitment to earmark those funds for this project.
Okay.
Um, there is also a measure, uh, Congressman Swalwell has put a uh, bill. For the Assembly for allocation for another three million dollars. There is a number of government infrastructure grants and, you know, uh, uh. Recovery relief funds that are available for this kind of project, so. I believe that between city and county folks, they're opening every envelope to try to find the the funds to cover the the costs associated.
Got opening every envelope, hoping there's money inside.
It was already, I'll let Supervisor Howard speak.
Yeah, we we're absolutely committed to coming through with the funds that we already have designated. We're working on getting additional funds to cover the cost overages. We're working on uh, providing some, and when I said incentives. Um, that's what I meant, uh, for Buena Vista, but for others as well. And so, yes, while this is costly, uh, we know it's the right thing to do and we are committed to doing it. And I can say with great confidence that we'll get there. Thank you. Great question, though. We have to be mindful of that, especially as costs are always escalating.
They certainly are. Okay, all right, or we're looking for feedback, any last comments or feedback? All right, seeing them, thank you, sir. I appreciate your presentation and your succinct of overhead slides. Do you have one more after the final?
So I know we want to open up for thirty day comment, when you did, would you, would you figure it would be disseminated? Within a couple of weeks, a month, what what's the schedule look like?
So, uh, excuse me, so uh, it will be thirty day public review and comment period, the deadline should be August eleventh. And we will be sending that out today to all the agencies and stakeholders. And just excuse me, Chair Brown, I believe we have some comments.
I was just gonna open public comment period. Absolutely, thank you very much. All right, I'd like to open the public comment. Period on Agenda Item Five, do we have any speakers?
We have one public comment, Mr. Abrio, you have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned that this uh, report is, seems to be based on, uh, you know, airy-fairy theories and not a lot of. Uh, looking at the ground truth. For example, when there was word, how allocation of State Water Project water to Zone Seven is very misleading. Um, they don't get hardly ever a hundred percent of their allocation, maybe this year. Uh, but in many drought years, they only get twenty percent or five percent of their allocation, so. Uh, anybody who who's expecting the word, you know, to be allocated the water in their hour of need, by the way, this says twenty-two seconds. Is uh, is is fooling themselves. Um, the the groundwater impact of these nitrates, we've been hearing all over and over. All we hear about is nitrates. You go to Zone Seven, they barely mention nitrates. It it's hardly, hardly comes up, the word nitrates. You know what comes up? PFAS. PFAS comes up, City Council of Pleasanton, PFAS comes up, everybody is doing PFAS. Um, so I kind of doubt that nitrates is all, it doesn't really bother me that much, nitrates. And uh, although, you know, please clean them all up, uh, they are carcin- carcinogen, they, uh, we do need to protect human health. But PFAS needs to be the, the, the focus here, um, and I'm not, I'm not gonna. Go on a witch hunt against nitrates when we already should be all focused on PFAS. This agricultural zones, you know, we we saw lots and lots of maps like this, saying that uh, green zones everywhere. Then, when you look at the satellite images, you see little teeny splotches of agriculture. That satellite is not uh, looking at planners, uh, not looking at your zonings. It's looking at what the wavelengths of light that are coming back. It's using stuff like Sepala would use to look at those wavelengths and analyze them and categorize them. And figure out, is this agriculture? When it says agriculture, I believe them. And when you put up all these giant splotches and say that's agriculture, it's not. By the way, agriculture grew substantially from when, from two thousand one to two thousand nineteen, on two thousand nineteen on the Landsat photos. Substantially, an agriculture means vineyards. Now, there are conflicting reports once again here. Yeah, I I doubt your numbers. I go to Zone Seven, I read their, uh, what is it, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, May eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Zone seven says that there are thirty-eight hundred acres of vineyards. We just heard twenty-nine hundred. It's a big difference. Big difference. And then there's another, in terms of water usage, vineyards use a certain amount of water. And golf courses use half that much water. That's quite a lot of water in comparison to the vineyards. And for, for, on a per acre basis, it's a lot more water. So, um, what does this mean? When, when we talk about the old wines, we have to pull them out, the old vineyards. Well, there's a thing called, and one new marketing term that's actually very profitable for countries like South Africa and Australia, old heritage vines. Take those, yeah, and sell them for twice as much per bottle, sixty dollars a bottle. It's uh, uh, I'm all, I love to taste that stuff. We should have, and then my final recommendation here, and I don't see it being, being emphasized here in this report at all. I think there needs to be an economic um, focus.
Mr. Abrio.
This report, you need to exploit.
Mr. Abrio.
Your existing winery production, build more bed and breakfast.
Mr. Abrio, your time is up.
More money from the existing wines.
Thank you, sir. I'm very proud. You have two wineries that are served through Zone Seven that are in the city of Pleasanton. So we have Ruby Hill and Rubino, maybe some of the differences, and Old Vine, Zins and others are wonderful wines, I agree. Okay, do we have any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay, I'll close the public comments, and I think you've received feedback, is that correct, Executive Director? You perceive what you're looking for?
We did, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can just make a quick comment.
Of course.
There is a, uh, the speaker mentioned that uh, nitrates are carcinogenic, uh, that's not true. The main concern about nitrates is uh, for children that are under the age of two, it's called methemoglobinemia. Uh, and the nitrates bind the uh, the hemoglobin in the blood, so it's a blue baby syndrome. So, uh, um, and PFAS, uh, yes, that's a concern for people to drink it. Uh, PFAS is not a concern in state project water. Uh, and for irrigation water, it certainly wouldn't be a concern, because it's not being adjusted by people. So, just a couple of clarifications on that.
Appreciate that, thank you, sir. Okay, all right, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Six, which is the draft report on Alameda County LAFCO's initial feasibility analysis. Again, uh, staff is looking for some initial discussions and feedback.
Thank you, Chair Brown, that is correct. The report has been commissioned to provide the community with clear and objective information about an incorporation proposal. Its service costs and tax revenue implications.
Excuse me, excuse me, the super is a mile late. We, I can't see because the slide is still up.
Okay, turn off the screen, sir.
Excuse me, uh, Chair, I'll present uh, our Richard Burksen for the study, and we'll add the slide, he will provide a presentation.
I can't even see into the room now.
Okay.
So that the annexation versus out-of-area contracts.
Okay, that will be gone in just a second, sir. So with that, I would like to invite Richard Burksen from Burksen Associates to present the initial feasibility analysis.
Welcome, Mr. Burksen.
Good afternoon, uh, it's a pleasure to be here today. Um, as Rachel mentioned, I was asked to prepare a feasibility analysis, initial analysis. Of potential incorporation of unincorporated communities in Alameda County. Uh, I, I don't have a bunch of slides, but I do have a lot of numbers, so. I have worked on incorporation studies for many years in California. I'm currently working on on several right now, actually. In addition to this one, um, I've, uh. Prepared several projects in Alameda County, including the two thousand and two comprehensive fiscal analysis for Castro Valley. And it was heard and reviewed by LAFCO. It did go to the voters, but. Uh, it failed at the ballot by about seventy percent uh, opposed. The objectives of this uh, initial feasibility analysis are to, first of all, inform the residents and decision makers. About the pros and cons and options related to incorporation. Identify any fatal flaws uh, related to uh, cityhood and and perhaps options to improve feasibility. Uh, also note any issues that are, would require further research and analysis. And then create a framework if residents do decide to proceed at some point. Um, this will be a, a, a good database that they can build upon and expand. Because uh, following a submittal of application to LAFCO, there will be. Uh, commissioned a comprehensive, much more detailed analysis by LAFCO at that point. In the process of um, the analysis, uh, we did work with county departments. Uh, they were responsive to our request for data. I uh, very much appreciate their help uh, in preparing the maps during G I S analysis and. Uh, providing information. Uh, we also uh, extensively reviewed the county's budget. And the unincorporated area budget, that's part of that. Uh, and also made um, reference to other incorporation studies that are ongoing. Uh, we reviewed a preliminary draft with LAFCO staff and also distributed sections to. Uh, county departments for their review, and we did get some very useful feedback. And information that we integrated into the report that you have. Uh, so um, I understand that this report that you're looking at will be distributed. And there'll be a public review period, and I'll revise uh, the report as appropriate. I was asked to look at uh, six unincorporated communities. And those were grouped into three alternative boundaries. The six communities, and I'm glad they aren't covered up here on the screen, uh, are Castro Valley. Uh, the communities that comprise the Eden area. Uh, namely Ashland, Cherryland, Hayward Acres, San Lorenzo, and then the Fairview area. Here's a, a very brief snapshot of the bound, the three boundary alternatives that I was asked to look at. Uh, first of all, Castro Valley, um, and then Castro Valley plus all of the other communities in uh, Eden. And also Fairview. And then, thirdly, uh, just Fairview plus the Eden area communities. And uh, you can see in terms of size, Castro Valley and the Fairview Eden are roughly similar. Although uh, population-wise, Fairview and Eden is much more uh, dense in terms of residential. Uh, Castro Valley, on the other hand, has more uh, jobs and uh, more assessed value. Slightly less sales tax. Uh, overall, uh, as you'll see in the next tables. Uh, Castro Valley generates more revenue per capita uh, than the other uh, alternative. The uh, bottom line is that feasibility clearly requires additional revenue. And what's currently available, and that's really not a surprise. Uh, as many of you may know, state law was changed uh, in past years. Such that new cities no longer receive uh, vehicle license fee revenue. Which all other existing cities uh, benefit from, and it's now subvented to the cities uh, in the form of property tax. So new cities don't receive that, uh, and that's a very important component. Uh, in addition to um, uh, tax revenues generated from commercial uses that are uh, in each community. So um, just some numbers, uh, it's the net revenues minus expenditures. These are annual uh, estimates. Um, you can see across the board, they're negative. I did show uh, my estimate if the vehicle license fee were restored. Uh, to new cities, and there have been efforts in the past, but uh, nothing has. Happened today, unfortunately. Um, but if, if B L F revenue were provided in the amounts that I've estimated. Um, the Castro Valley boundary would come close to breaking even. The total area might be slightly positive, and this is before considering uh, reserves and contingencies. Uh, the Fairview Eden area, though, is still uh, somewhat negative, um, largely due to its uh. Predominantly residential character. And the larger population relative to the revenues being generated. I have also estimated that there would be some impact on the county potentially. The reduced revenues, uh, the county would experience as, as revenues are transferred to the new city. Are not, are are greater than their cost savings from shifting uh, service responsibilities. And so you can see the bottom line uh, in all cases is negative. So next steps, well, hopefully, there will be legislation to address state funding to new cities. It's very, very difficult for any new city to occur, although one uh. One example is perhaps Mountain House you may be familiar with, which is an exception, I think, uh, anywhere in the state. There would be an update to the analysis that I prepared if somebody does choose to move forward. Community outreach, of course, and as I mentioned earlier, an application to LAFCO would be submitted. LAFCO would review the application, prepare a more detailed, comprehensive analysis, and if. It was feasible and LAFCO moved it forward to the ballot, then there would be an election held. So um, I'd be happy to respond to any questions or take your comments and feedback.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let's start with those in the room. Anybody like to start with questions? Yes.
I have one question, um. Your Fairview Eden, don't new cities and the areas they contain have to be contiguous?
That's uh, an excellent point, and that became clear uh, as we got into the analysis. So any applications that are submitted, um, the area would have to be contiguous.
So, in this case, what would happen? They'd have to take some of Hayward or. I mean, yeah, saying that I know is, it's like.
Somewhat uh, hypothetical at this point.
Okay.
I don't think there is a group of proponents, at least that I'm aware of. So when a group did come forward, I I frankly, um, they would have to submit a boundary that was contiguous. And I, uh, so it would not look, uh, you know.
Like it looks.
Like that boundary, but I think the analysis is still useful to see the characteristics of the different communities. So, but yes, that's an excellent uh, comment.
Thank you. Please.
Okay, um, I had a question in regard to the impact to Alameda County. Does that take into account the most current budget, the table that you put forward at table three?
I looked at the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, so it does not reflect the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, it just obviously wasn't available when I started.
Uh, Richard, it was a great report, and I've got a lot of friends in Castro Valley who've asked me a ton of questions, which I won't bore you with today. a ton of questions, which I won't bore you with today. But, but in general, it, it has to go with it, and for the Castro Valley scenario, you say there's about a seven million dollar shortfall. And then there's another three million dollars that we might have to make up to the county. So that means the shortfall is more like ten million dollars.
Well, potentially. Now, the uh, impact on the county, I know it's negative and it, it does look significant, although these numbers are so preliminary, uh, I would expect uh, that impact to, to change. Uh, I, I've been, I think, conservative. Uh, but yes, you're basically correct. Um, although that three million, as you know, would be negotiated and uh, you know, so we know how to see what happens, but.
And, and then I guess the other question in general is that your estimates are fairly conservative. And I think what I'm hearing from my folks is that if we were to pursue a Castro Valley, our city might be a lot leaner than, my, new city might be a lot leaner than your comparisons with maybe San Leandro and Dublin, which are more mature cities.
Uh, that's possible. I mean, generally speaking, uh, like you said, I do like to be conservative and make the basic assumption that service levels won't be reduced. Now, there's different ways to provide services, obviously, and if they can be more efficient and still provide a similar level of service at a lower cost, then, then great. That might be possible. Um, and of course, I didn't really mention, other than the vehicle license fee revenue, um, communities always have the option of uh, additional taxes. You know, never uh, looked on very favorably, but um, uh, in two thousand and two, I, I believe that a hotel tax was at that point added to the ballot and um, because it was felt that that was important to the sure feasibility. Um, and now there are, there is a hotel tax and that's baked into the numbers. But that's always an option. Um, and as you probably know, many uh, cities throughout California have uh, voted on and approved additional uh, sales taxes for various purposes, one or two percent in some cases. So I think in, in these times, it's almost unavoidable to keep up with rising costs is that uh, you need more revenue and especially new cities. And I would be surprised if anybody proceeded with a new city in the absence of the BLF or, or some other um, significant revenue source.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to those who are calling in. Supervisor Miley.
Yeah, thank you. A number of the questions and comments have been raised already. So I'll try not to be repetitive, but I probably will be. First of all, I want to thank um, Burson for the, the analysis. Because I, this is the first time this type of analysis has been done for the entire unincorporated areas. I do think it's informative. Secondly, you know, I was here when we did the effort around incorporation in two thousand and two. And I'm, and my office actually paid for the economic analysis. It was about a hundred thousand dollars. It took place uh, for the incorporation effort. If um, Castro Valley had moved ahead with incorporation, I think as, as been pointed out, the likelihood of, would have been that uh, folks would have had to uh, tax themselves additionally to uh, maintain the um, the feasibility of their uh, incorporation. Uh, based on what happened subsequently in terms of the, the economy. And even with this analysis, it's been pointed out that the likelihood would be that um, even with the BLF, there, there's going to be the need for additional uh, taxation. And that certainly would be the case without um, without uh, some type of replacement for BLF. It's been pointed out that the funding, the reduction in uh, in uh, funding to the county, that's negotiable. And I think, you know, that figure definitely could be negotiated down, I, I feel, because I think it would be in the best interest of Castro Valley to incorporate. I know back in two thousand and two, I was, I, my commitment was to put it on the ballot, but I didn't take a position on incorporation. And we always felt that at some point incorporation was going to roll around again. And I do think um, Castro Valley deserves to be incorporated in it as a city, but it's just going to be up to the, obviously the electorate to determine whether or not uh, they want to make up the shortfall to ensure the feasibility of incorporation. I believe the study that you did just now contemplated the canyons of Castro Valley being incorporated uh, as part of a, a new city for Castro Valley. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes, I believe it's included in the.
Okay, so, and, and that's another big uh, concern. Because I know with incorporation in two thousand and two, some of um, the opposition to incorporation was the fact that the uh, growth boundaries would be eliminated through incorporation and and then the voters of Castro Valley would then have to determine whether or not they want to impose uh, urban growth boundaries uh, on the canyon lands of Castro Valley. So that's something to, that needs to be um, considered and factored in. I'm going to be very interested in seeing how the MACs, the uh, Eden MAC, the Fairview MAC and the Castro Valley MAC, how they um, receive this information and what type of public input is received at the various MAC meetings on this information. Uh, finally, I know I've talked with at least one prominent figure in uh, San Leandro. I'm not going to mention who that prominent figure is, uh, but I was um, encouraged that if there were to be an annexation effort, um, San Leandro would be not looking to cherry pick, but would be looking to annex all of its sphere of influence uh, into the city of San Leandro. Because I think that's been an issue since I've been a, a supervisor. I have not supported any, any annexations that has been cherry, that have cherry picked the best parts of the unincorporated area to go into the adjacent city and leaving the county with um, the, the need to provide services to challenging communities. That's one reason why we have a lot of challenges in Ashley and Cherryland, because a lot of the tax base for uh, the unincorporated area in a, in the Ashley and Cherryland area was annexed into um, San Leandro, particularly as it relates to the Bay Fair Mall, et cetera. Uh, I know an effort was underway to try to annex a, uh, Cherryland, uh, portions of Cherryland, but I, I didn't necessarily support that because once again, it was cherry picking as opposed to annexing all of it into uh, Hayward. So uh, once again, we're going to need to see what the reaction is to this, um, to the information that's in this study. But I do think this study is uh, very informative and very, very uh, helpful. So those are some of my initial reactions to this at the, at the moment. And um, I think the study is um, paints a, a good picture of what needs to happen should people be desirous of moving forward on any particular uh, path. So thank you.
Right. Good comments. I just have a few then. Thank you. Uh, when you talk about public outreach, what did that look like to you? What does public outreach look like to you?
Well, I, I think the basic point I'm making is that uh, it's so important um, in incorporation efforts I've seen, for there to be um, that grassroots support. So I, I think outreach by the actual residents or proponents of incorporation, it's uh, uh, there are some um, agencies, uh, El Dorado Hills Park and Rec District that's been considering incorporation, but uh, it's mainly been driven by their board up to now and a few vocal residents, but uh, nobody shows up at their meetings. So um, I, I don't think their prospects are too good. So anyhow, that's what I mean by outreach, not so much by LAFCO necessarily beyond what they would typically do for um, uh, this report or so on.
Okay, I guess. Um, so I originally thought of organizations like Rotary where they have a request speakers, uh, real estate groups that meet. I know at Castro Valley, they meet once a week. Um, Town Hall doing something like that. And even like Alliance Club, looking at these other organizations that ten, oftentimes have civic leaders. Uh, Supervisor Miley, when this came previously, did you engage in any of these uh, group discussions? I know you said you stayed neutral, but I just wondered if you were part of coordinating you of a well-known name and as a part of coordinating conversation.
I wa- I was open to that in order to provide education and outreach and awareness, but I remain neutral in all of those types of uh, gatherings in, in formats. Back in two thousand and two.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just see it. If we, if we do want to go forward or, or the decision is to go forward, you could still remain neutral should you decide to do that this time, but still uh, be present when a presentation is made, I guess. Um, you, you have the name draw that could bring in
Oh, yeah.
A, a group of folks that would want.
Sure, yeah, yes. Definitely.
Right. And my last question is regarding uh, the sales tax revenue from online sales. So uh, right now, we, the cities have been fighting to get their share of online sales that have come from their particular communities. Were these communities, are they blended into the entire um, county? Or are, can we identify them for these districts?
Well, there definitely would be a benefit from online sales. Um, and uh, much of those sales go into uh, a state and county pool, they call it. And then that pool gets distributed proportionate to other sales. So and I have seen that that additional share of the pool money has grown significantly, probably doubled at least in, in recent years. So they would definitely benefit from that. You know, they would get in addition to the basic one percent, another fifteen to twenty percent or more on top of that from their share of this pool or, or sales that couldn't otherwise be allocated.
So you're looking at vehicle license fees, which I think of being fairly small, but um, if I look at what I spend online, whether it's one brand or another, it's significant. And so I would just want to make sure that that's incorporated into the numbers, because if you're trying to pencil out an annexation or an incorporation of a city, then uh, I'd want to know everything I could about what the funds that could be deemed for that community could be sourced at.
Right. And I have included that additional factor for the pool. And I, I think I've been conservative. I, I'm not sure I've gotten the best number possible for that. Uh, again, it, it can be tricky to get some of those sales tax numbers. That was probably the hardest number to get, the sales tax, to be honest.
Okay. Yes.
I just wanted to uh, clarify a question that Supervisor Miley asked. He asked you if the Canyonlands was included. By Canyonlands, I'm pretty sure what he means are Crow Canyon Road, Palomeros Road. And I think your answer was the, 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 the five canyons development was included.
I, I think, yeah, you're right. I was thinking of the five canyons.
Yeah, because the Canyonlands are not, by the map here, they're definitely not included, so.
Okay, okay.
And that takes some, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burson. I'm going to open the public comment period. Do we have a uh, public speaker?
Miss.
Looks like we might have one.
Mr. Brio, do you have a slip? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Brio, you have three minutes to speak. If you could please stay within your three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
So um, yeah, you know, the sales tax revenues are hard to get, but as it so happens, I've been getting them for the last few months and um, they've been, uh, this is every s- ma- big city in the county. And you see they're all, their, their revenues are all going, trending upwards somewhat. And then there's one city that is just exploding. I live there. The city of Fremont is eating your lunches. Our share of the, of the state, of the countywide pool went from fourteen percent a couple few years ago, over several years, uh, is now up to about uh, double that, about twenty-seven percent. And we're very proud of that. And uh, we, we ascribe it, our Director of Finance ascribes that to new auto sales revenue. New auto sales revenue. Think about where all the new autos are coming in your driveways. Excellent. We are the high-tech wonderland. We are the, the advanced manufacturing. And our, this is, amounts to roughly fifty million dollars per year. Uh, uh, order magnitude numbers of unexpected additional revenue that they have had to figure out what to do with as one time, whatever. And they, they're unwilling to, to uh, forecast these and to ongoing as a stable revenue into the future. But I see no reason why it won't continue as stable revenue into the future. Because this is not a new auto sales. This is a structural change in how cars are being bought and sold in America. And we are the leaders. And we are eating your lunch. And uh, we, I love it. And uh, when, with, with this kind of, 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 of structural change in our economy, um, thirty, fifty million, we have one fifty, one point five times the, the revenue of all these cities, Ashland, Castro Valley, uh, Fair, Fairview, Cherryland, all of them put together, we have one point five times as many people. So on a per capita basis, we're just lucked into thirty-three million dollars here. Thirty-three million dollars a year would cover everything. All these shortfalls over here. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about this whole uh, approach, analysis approach. Because I've just been, wasted all my time in this whole, uh, talking about money. And, and I think that the real concern here is representation, is uh, are people be, uh, getting, receiving the services they need? How do they feel about their government? Are they being represented? Are they happy? Uh, all those kinds of things. Of course, I live in Fremont. I don't have to worry about those things, but uh, you know, I do hear little mumblings from over there. And maybe those are the real issues. And maybe all this stuff is a red herring. Uh, we've, I shouldn't be too worried about all these things. They're close enough. They're kind of, it's not like they're, they're losing all that much money. Seem to be doing okay. They might be able to incorporate. They should think about calling Elon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brio. Do you have any other public speakers?
Yes, we do. Mr. Greg, you have three minutes to speak. Mr. Greg, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, I just did. Sorry, Greg Slants. I live here in Fairview off of East Avenue. And uh, I've been here for about fifty years in the Fairview area. Fought the two thirty-eight extension and all the rest of that good stuff. Uh, I have, I'm going to pose some questions because this was presented to me originally as Greg, did you hear that they're considering incorporating Fairview into uh, Hayward? And of course, that seems strange. So my first question is, what is required to get this type of concept or requests that's going to spend county money? I'm an old manufacturing engineer, used to run factories. So I'm always looking for a cost benefit analysis. And I think, by the way, Burson Associates sure made it clear that it's, the benefits may not be there. So what is the criteria that, that was based on spending the money to do this study? And then how in the world did they, you know, include in this study Eden and Fairview as being connected, which has already been pointed out? And, and I've mentioned, I want to make sure that this is clearly stated somewhere that this is not incorporated into Hayward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Executive Director, would you like to comment on the question, uh, why we're having this discussion?
Um, we've received a lot of public sentiment to, for LAFCO to review some type of preliminary comprehensive fiscal analysis or initial feasibility analysis. This was, I guess, showcased to a lot of the municipal advisory committees, I believe, spring of last year. And this was the agreed upon study areas of looking at Castro Valley standalone. Castro, or excuse me, Castro Valley plus the Eden area and just the Eden area. So we received a lot of comments. And from what we received, these were the models to be studied and they were agreed upon.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, do you have any other public speakers?
We have one more public speaker, Mr. Peter, Peter Rosen, please. You have three minutes to speak. Mr. Rosen, please unmute your mic.
I have. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I have a series of questions, so I'm just going to quickly ask them and then uh, maybe you could give the details. I went through the study and I appreciate the study and I appreciate um, what's involved, but I have some specific questions. One of them is about the property tax reimbursement rate. Uh, it seems uh, I don't understand why Castro Valley's pro, assumed property tax reimbursement rate of twelve point nine percent versus that twenty-three point oh three percent for the Eden and Fairview area. If that was combined, that's a, that's a huge uh, funding gap. Um, and then one of them that I had about the online sales, um, whether the dest- destination assessments and things were included in the report, I, I think that the assumption is rather conservative. I have another question about, um, let's see, uh, vehicle purchasing. Uh, it shows on here six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-six for new vehicles. Um, many jurisdictions lease them, so I, I don't know if, why it's strictly on purchasing. Um, many jurisdictions lease them, so I, I don't know if, why it's strictly on purchasing. Uh, I have a question about economic development uh, on here. It shows five point two million. Uh, and that is based on a person's cost on what is, as was said earlier, we won't, we don't want to have a reduction in services. So my specific question is, do we know how much is currently being spent by Alameda County uh, in economic development because, and keep in mind that salaries are a line item. I'm just curious. Is Alameda County spending five point two million on economic development in Castro Valley? Uh, I'd be curious to know how much has actually been spent on economic development that's outside of grant and salaries over the last five years in Castro Valley, because that's another delta. Anyway, uh, thank you, and I'd love to see some of these border maps defined, because it's questions about some little border things, but thank you for doing this.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Okay, hopefully we'll get some of that information. People are taking notes and hopefully can bring it back, since this is our first time to um, see this information. Okay?
No more comments, Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll close the public comment period. And we're going to move on to Agenda Item Seven, which is a contract award for Community Services Municipal Service Review. Executive Director?
Thank you, Chair. So our staff has received a proposal from R S G to conduct the Commission's Community Services Municipal Service Review that also includes broadband services. We, we had an ad hoc selection committee that was uh, comprised of, consisted of Commissioners Von Heter Leopold and Commissioners Johnson and the executive officer. And we conducted an interview, I believe, on June first and found that they um, were definitely uh, well within their sphere, so to speak, to uh, conduct and and complete this municipal service review. So with that, the ad hoc selection committee recommends R S G to complete this Commission's Municipal Service Review on Community Services and Related Sphere of Influence Updates for the contract period of eighteen months, starting in August of two thousand and twenty-three. And then in an amount to not exceed cost of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. And staff also recommends in, um, excuse me, in the alternative recommendation one to authorize the executive officer to finalize contract negotiations and execute the consulting contract with R S G with advice of Lafco Legal Counsel. So I'll return the item to the Chair for any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Since uh, we have two members of the committee, are there comments that you'd like to offer? I'm sure you don't have questions.
Proposal that they gave us was incredibly in-depth. Uh, there's no doubt in my mind that they'll be able to provide to complete this um, review with the utmost care and concern. I mean, they've been doing work um, around the state for quite a while.
You agree?
I agree.
Okay, we don't have questions, I assume. So I'm going to open the public uh, comment period. Do we have any comments?
No public comments, Chair.
Okay, close the public comment period, bring it back. Uh, would either, um, it's, since you're a member, would you like to make a motion?
So I'll move the item.
Hernandez will go ahead and say that.
Okay, we have a motion made. In a second, can we take a roll call vote?
Chair Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Furia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley?
Yes.
Commissioners Splendorio?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Okay, we're moving along nice pace. Uh, Agenda Item Eight is a Policy and Budget Committee Member Appointment. Executive Director?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Uh, so we have a Policy and Budget Committee that consists of Commissioner, Alternate Commissioner Von Heter Leopold, as well as Commissioner Johnson, and there has been an absence uh, for that committee. We usually appoint three members. And staff is looking for the commission to nominate one additional member to that Policy and Budget Committee.
And did you receive uh, feedback that there was one member that was interested who may not be here today?
Yes, we have. Commissioner Bob, Alternate Commissioner Bob Warner is interested. Um, unfortunately, he's not here today, so if uh, Commissioner from uh, that is present today could nominate him, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would be happy to nominate
Mr. Warner.
Mr. Warner, who is unfortunately absent, because he's having, as you know, because of his back, he's having an elevator put in, he needs to wait for the contractor, so.
He is a lucky man with an elevator, a future elevator. All right, thanks. We have a motion made.
Oh, I'll start it then.
Seconded, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Close the public comment and bring it back for a roll call vote, please.
Chair Brown?
Yes, and I'm so glad Mr. Warner will be serving in this position.
Commissioner Furia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley?
Yes.
Commissioner Splendorio?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Right, Agenda Item Nine, which is the Calafco Annual Conference and Achievement Award nominations. Executive Director?
Thank you, Chair. So the California Association of Local Agency Form- Formation Commissions will hold their annual conference in Monterey, scheduled for October eighteenth through the twentieth. Staff is requesting that, um, excuse me, staff is requesting that the commission appoint a voting delegate, an alternate voting delegate for the twenty-twenty-three Calafco Annual Conference and advise staff or the Chair on any nominations for the Calafco Board of Directors, and they are looking for either a public member or city member for that appointment, or the Calafco Achievement Awards. And I, I believe the awards are for like outstanding Lafco professional or Lafco volunteer or outstanding commission. So if we can appoint a voting delegate, an alternate delegate at this time, and if there are any board nominations or achievement awards, either please do that today or notify the Chair at a later date before the, I believe, August eighteenth deadline.
Excellent, okay. Um, do we have anyone interested in serving as a voting delegate or an alternate?
I've, I've served as the voting delegate for the last three years or so, so.
I heard you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
If our Chair is attending, I would nominate.
Our Chair was not planning on attending.
Well, you're missing out.
Okay, I have to check my schedule, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Georgine, but that's who I would nominate if she was.
I appreciate that. So uh, in my absence, is there anyone else that would like to go?
I will point out to you that only Commissioners Johnson and Von Heter Leopold do get up that early.
It's because we don't test all the wines the night before.
Are you making a recommendation for Commissioner Johnson and Leopold?
Make a mission Johnson.
Uh, you are a sitting person on this committee, so would you be the voting member and then you'd be the alternate? Would that be acceptable?
Sure.
Okay, and that way you're rotated a little bit. Three years in a row is a long time. Okay, we have a motion or an agreement.
I also, I would like to nominate Rachel as outstanding staff.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
All right, so is that a motion?
Former Chair.
Okay, all right, we have a motion made for outstanding Executive Director, as well as a voting member and alternate member. Can we uh, have a second, please? I will go ahead and second. Thank you. Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Chair Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Furia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley?
Yes.
Commissioner Splendorio?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Okay, well, um, the next Agenda Item is matters initiated by members of the commission. Do we have any items that we'd like to uh, bring back to a future meeting? Right, seeing none, we're going to move to our nominated, uh, uh, let's see, I don't know what the term is here. Excellent, outstanding Lafco uh, nominee, Executive Director Jones. Do you have an executive report?
Chair.
Okay, all right, no report today. Then uh, we have information items, Agenda Item Twelve.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just to reiterate, there are no current proposals uh, to be submitted to the commission as of yet. We believe there'll be at least two proposals coming in the fall or winter of this year. And um, I just want to reiterate, we stated this at our special meeting, but Lafco will host the Staff Workshop, the Calafco Staff Workshop in Pleasanton. Um, that is slated for April twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-four. So uh, we look forward to hosting that and if there are any suggestions or uh, uh, recommendations for uh, Calafco to host a mobile workshop, um, we are definitely um, open and susceptible to hear some good um, ideas. So, thank you.
Excellent, I will be there for that one.
Thank you, Chair.
In my own town. Okay, just a reminder, we have a Policy, Budget and Committee Meeting coming up on August third, as well as our next regular meeting is September fourteenth. With that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.